Welcome to Candidate Conversations for the March 5 Rio Rancho Municipal Elections. For this series, the Rio Rancho Observer has invited all city council candidates in for an interview to discuss why they're running and thoughts on city issues. Additionally, we have invited representatives from the city in to discuss three bond issues that are on the ballot. All right, today we have Edward Pauls Grove candidate for City Council District 6. Can you take a few moments to introduce yourself, your background, and why you're running?
Well, sure, Tracy. I appreciate the opportunity to come down and introduce myself and answer some of these questions. My name is Eddie Pauls Grove. I guess I'll start with, I was born in, near LA, never saw snow till I was 10. Moved to Oklahoma. I joined the service almost 50 years ago. Gosh, 50 years ago. I was a paratrooper in the Army, and I was stationed in Italy and traveled through Europe. My job in the military, I was a parachute rigger, which means I packed parachutes for people to jump with. So I learned early on about attention to detail and consistency. I got out of the military, knocked around at few jobs, and went to college. I got a degree in geology from Tulsa University. And after a little bit of time, I was fortunate enough to get a job with the Corps of Engineers in 1992. By 1994, I was a geologist for the Corps and moved to the Albuquerque District with my wife, Sandy. We moved to Rio Rancho 30 years ago, and we lived in District 6. We built a house there about 20 years ago. So I'm retired now. I've worked doing some, it's not really consulting, volunteering with different groups to try to address issues in the county. The oil and gas ordinance that was proposed about five years ago, special assessment district that was proposed, gosh, 15 years ago, maybe a little more. And now I'm currently evaluating some potentially hazardous waste disposals at the municipal landfill, as well as into our sanitary sewer system.
Okay. One of the reasons people move into Rio Rancho is due to its lower crime rate, public safety. Even so, there are still issues with crime, including theft, drugs, occasionally even murder. How should the city work to try to eradicate those issues?
Well, it's going to be really tough to eradicate, right? What we can do is try to stem the increase. What we can try to do is resolve some of the issues, maybe some of the basis behind some of the crime. About 15, I don't know, I guess it was about five years ago, the city council repealed certain ordinances that sent some of the petty crime like you're talking about to municipal court. Our municipal judge, Judge Cook, is a pretty conservative judge. And I guess as a cost-saving measure, the city council voted to send these, repeal the ordinance and send some of these alleged violators to magistrate court, which everybody who lives in Rio Rancho knows in Sandoval County, that the magistrate court judges can be a little more forgiving. They're not quite as firm, it doesn't appear. I think recently, there was a drunk driver on his fifth drunk driving charge who had been released. So what are we going to do about this? Well, one thing, you know, we did learn that drugs, whether illicit or prescribed, are found in, even in the school's wastewater system. Now, that's, you know, that, I guess it was cocaine and fentanyl and these other, you know. So what I would like to try to propose is, is city officials meet with municipal court judge, revisit the fact of the repealing of the ordinance, maybe reinstitute those ordinances, maybe get control back in the city to try to address some of these smaller crimes. What concerns me is some of these crimes are, you know, someone's going to get hurt. I mean, that's what's going to happen. I see almost every day, vandals, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, whatever it is, out coming up to people's homes, trying to get in their cars. They're probably just kids, but boy, somebody, somebody could get hurt, probably will get hurt. So we really want to try to, try to, you know, educate parents as well as these kids, work with the judges, and try to, try to get a handle on it, maybe bring it more local.
Okay. What type of business would you like to see moving into Rio Rancho? And how could we get them here? And especially, you know, in trying to attract, trying to attract more diverse businesses to the city?
Well, my position on businesses is that I fully support smart, water-wise businesses. I'm thinking that we could work with, collaborate with the Sandoval Economic Alliance. They have some good tools, and they've done some evaluations of potential targeted markets that we could, we could focus on. Life sciences, professional services, manufacturing of some kind. So really, what, what my idea would be, would be to try to collaborate with, with the council as well as the Economic Alliance, and try to draw them in through incentives, incentives such as maybe impact fee analysis with regards to commercial ventures. When we're talking about business, we're talking about gross receipts. The more diverse business that we can attract into Rio Rancho, the more we can keep people living and working, spending in our city, rather than going to Albuquerque or Santa Fe.
Okay. And then, what are your thoughts on the proposed LNG facility within the Rio Rancho city limits? And how do you think it will pack the city and its residents?
Well, the, there's something called the, oh my gosh, it's, well, there's, there's a principle that pertains to potential risk. I think the LNG, we would hope there would be no actual impact. The concern, right, the concern is just that. And I don't mean to be facetious, but, but the concern is that LNG could be, you know, have, it's been, across the country, there have been some instances of dangerous, you know, results from LNG. I don't know, I haven't seen the evaluation, the analysis with regards to labor, permanent labor workforce. So I can't really say to that. I would really want to be very cautious, precautionary principle, that's the one actually is what it was, precautionary principle, where something, if you're, if you really don't have a lot of information, you do what you can to get the information to minimize the risk to the public. Health, welfare, and safety of the public is the number one concern of any city government, federal government, state government, so.
Okay. The city and the council have called on the legislature this session to impose more restrictive open records in their priorities. Residents, including our staff, have called for more transparency in the past. So where do you stand on the issue of open records and transparency?
I've probably filed more information review request, or FOIA request, Ibra request, than probably most any individual that you know. I'm just, because of the fact that, you know, transparency, open records is a foundation of a healthy, solid government. When you start seeing, kind of like what we saw last night at the Sandoval County Commission meeting, there was a motion to restrict comments from the public to only those pertaining to agenda items. To me, that's a really serious, you know, has a serious negative impact to the First Amendment, to our freedom of speech, to our ability to redress our government. The same thing applies to open records request. The public has the right and the need to know anything that pertains. Now, I have had issues with some transparency in city government with regards, again, back to the landfill and potential hazardous waste disposed there. The city's been pretty reluctant to call for the New Mexico Environment Department to come to town and present a town hall style meeting to address the documentation, which I feel is compelling, that I've compiled, and the city has been reluctant to do that. So that's just an indication to me that we cannot, as citizenry, we can't allow the government, our city government, a council, to, to try to abridge some of our most crucial rights. So I would stand behind, completely behind, open government and transparency, and that's how I, that's how I did my job with the Corps of Engineers. As a public servant, I, not only did I file for, but I responded to when I was in the Corps of Engineers. I was a regulator. I regulated and administered and enforced part of the Clean Water Act. So I was well-versed on the need to keep open records and provide documentation to the public when requested. So I'm a big supporter of transparency.
Okay. Earlier, or I guess it was last year now, there was a call to the city and the council to remove certain material from the library largely centered on LGBTQIA-themed materials. Do you think that was handled in the appropriate manner, or is there a way you would have responded differently?
I, that's a tough one. That is a tough one. You know, again, freedom of expression, freedom, freedom of speech. However, to me, it's more, how do parents feel? I'm not a parent, so I, you know, and I, city council and school districts, you know, so, you know, just as, I guess the way I would have handled it is maybe in a more, more town hall style meetings, try to keep the anger and, you know, some of the harshness out of it. Try to, try to calmly sit down and discuss this and see, just, are there boundaries that parents feel should be imposed in a, in a public library? Are there restrictions? I could see, I could see a win-win based on trying to prevent access of certain materials to certain age groups. I could see that. I mean, I understand that. However, that's really something that's out of my purview, so that's a tough one for me.
Okay. Roads have been a continuing issue in Rio Rancho. Do you think the city is taking the right approach to scheduling repairs and replacements? And what, if any, changes do you think need to be made in that process?
That, again, is a, it's a tough nut to crack, you know. I've, since I've decided to run for council as an underdog, of course, I need to get out and talk to people. And I've gone out to a lot of folks. In District 6, we have a, kind of a more unique scenario out there. We have, we have communities of homes in developments with city water, city sewer, city roads. We have communities that have city water, dirt roads with septics, and we have some that are just on well water, dirt roads, and septic. So we have a diverse alignment of people. Some people, and I found this really tough with regards to dirt roads, the city seems to do pretty good when it comes to blading and grading, trying to keep the washboard aspect out of the dirt roads, and they seem to do pretty good at that. However, I just wonder, you know, about the, you know, the cumulative cost and impact of that, as opposed to trying to bring in something, asphalt milling, some way to maybe better pave the roads? Some of the roads, some of the older neighborhoods, I just was speaking to a resident yesterday, and he lives in Vista Hills, and it's an older community, in the 80s, mid 80s, old Amrep homes, and their roads are their roads, and they're, you know, they're, they're in not that good of shape. I think what the city is doing, like right now with Northern, they're taking Northern down to the, down to the basement, base course, and going to do a complete rebuild, at the same time replacing a water line, which is, is a smart way to do it. But it just seems, a lot of the folks that I've talked to feel like the squeaky wheel is really getting the grease when it comes to road repairs. What I'd like to kind of do is maybe prioritize as we, you know, I think the problem is that a lot of these folks, when I talk to them, and they, they talk about their roads, they talk about having tried to contact their counselor, they never get a response, no one ever comes out, and, you know, I think that's the difference with me. To me, a public servant is in the public, and I did that in my career, and I've told people on the internet and in person that that's a pledge I would make, is that I'll go out and do what I call kicking the dirt, which means I'll go out and we'll, we'll smudge around some rocks and dirt, and we'll talk about a way forward, you know, whether it's something like the neighborhood street improvement plans, or some other, some other way to try to mitigate some of the worst roads that may not be on the city's horizon. But overall, you know, I can't fault the replacement, if you're going to replace water lines, which we have a, you know, in 2021, the city reported losing over 270 million gallons of water due to, due to leakage, just leakage. It's not even counting some of the other, like orphan water that's unmetered. So, you know, with that fact in mind, it is critical that we replace the lines that need replaced, and we do it in such a fashion that while we're in there, replace, you know, work on the roads. So, so, so far, I just would like to see more attention paid to some of these older neighborhoods, I think.
Okay. Pedestrian safety has been brought to the forefront of concerns in recent months with some tragic accidents that were fatal. What steps do you feel might be taken to improve that?
Well, I know Loma, Colorado in particular, has had a fatality, a pedestrian fatality last fall, and the residents of Loma, Colorado feel that the removal of certain crosswalks, although the, the pedestrian wasn't in the area where the crosswalks were removed, however, the, the folks in Loma, Colorado feel like the, the crosswalk signage markings should be put back into place. The city, from my understanding, has felt that in compliance with certain federal guidelines, that crosswalks being too close together are not in compliance. So that was their reasoning behind it. I think there needs to be more attention paid, you know, again, it's an issue where, you know, we have just incredibly unfortunate accident that happened in the pedestrian. The other part of it, though, is we seem to be having an increase in reckless driving. We see a lot of hit-and-runs that we never used to see. A lot of these things that seem to be happening more in, in some of our residential areas, you know, my street in particular, there's, it's a 25 mile an hour zone. It's a kind of a small two-lane road paved, but people, you know, go 50, 60 miles, and oh yes, oh yes. In fact, it got so bad, I admit, I bought a radar gun, hey, you know, just to, just to be able to show them. Now, it did kind of work, because I was able to approach the traffic folks and say, hey, look, some of my photos I've got of some of these speeders, and it happens, talk to my neighbors, you know. So, you know, we had to go to that part that far. I just have to say, though, that was the one time when I realized I probably had to run for city council. All the neighbors on my street, you know, I'm not a rebel rouser or anything like that, but, but I talked to them, and I said, maybe we can work something out. Let me get ahold of our city counselor. I sent an email. Two weeks, I didn't get a response. Sent another email. Two weeks, I didn't get a response. I finally posted something on Nextdoor that was somewhat critical, and then I got a response. Well, my emails asked for a site visit, someone to come out and see what we were dealing with. When I finally did get an email, I was told, well, just be patient, they're working on it. You know, that just isn't, that's not, that's not what we vote for, so.
Okay. One of the candidates has stated that this is one of the most important elections Rio Rancho has had. Do you agree with that statement? And what are, why?
Well, I believe it, I believe it is. You know, just because of the turning point that we see when you, when you stand back and look at the city with regards to, you know, we have a lot of development, the city's really growing, we have a lot of residential development, we're not seeing the kind of commercial development to support, again, back to living and working and staying in town. So with that regards, it is important. We've seen, you know, a lot of the folks on the city council are initially appointed, you know, by the mayor, because the previous councilor stepped down for whatever reason. So I think we've got a predominance of folks that were initially appointed, and, and of course, when you're an incumbent like this race, it's so easy, it's so much easier to put out some good signs, maybe pay for some mailings, and kind of, you know, because it's traditionally lower voter turnout. So it is kind of an important, this is an important, an important vote. I think it is, I think it is very important that, that people do get out and vote. It's critical to get out and vote for whoever you vote for, for whatever party. And I think the idea that there's so many candidates in these races, you know, three and more, four in my, in District 6, is an indication that, that people of whatever party, whatever, you know, affiliation are anxious. They seem to have some anxiety, they seem to feel like we can do better. So I think in that, in that regard, it is an important race, I do.
So you think the number of candidates in general is a statement?
I do. And I think most anybody would, would agree with that fact, that either these candidates from whatever their affiliation feel that the, that the incumbents that are running are not doing the job, or that, well, I think that's probably what, what people are feeling, is that there's more to be done. We're at a, we're at a critical point.
Okay. What do you think are the biggest challenges currently facing the city of Rio Rancho?
Well, in my personal opinion, the biggest, for me, the biggest challenge, and when I look at it, I look at it from district to district. To me, the biggest challenge is the communication between city government and the public. That's, to me, seems to be a real issue that I hear over and over, that people are frustrated they're not being listened to. There's car washes coming in, where the design was such that maybe it could have been designed better, blowers facing neighborhoods, and the blowers can be pretty loud. You know, I think it's just a matter of, of, the biggest issue that I feel is that the city, you know, when we start talking about trying to, you know, reduce the ability to do open records requests, when we're talking about all of the people that I've talked to, virtually every single person I've talked to knocking on doors in meetings, I've always asked them, do you know who your counselor is? Just, and virtually everyone is like, no. Have you ever seen, no. I mean, it's just, you know, to me, that's a, you know, that's a sign of a, a city in declination, actually. We're, you know, we're not a community, we're, the counselors are not liaisons for the, for the citizenry to the government. You know, they're just, they seem to be somewhat standoffish, and they just don't respond. To me, that's really one of the biggest, the biggest issues, is just that lack of public confidence that I'm, that I've been seeing.
Okay. And then, do you think the city is moving in the right direction? And why would you say yes or no to that?
Well, it's kind of a half-half kind of thing. The city is growing, like leaps, one of probably the fastest-growing municipality in the state. And it's, you know, it's, it's because of, you know, we have a healthy environment, we've got really good schools, we've got a couple of hospitals, you know, we have CNM that provides a lot of good educational opportunities. So it is a, you know, growing in, with regards to the residential development, but the infrastructure and the commercial development seems to be lagging behind, you know. I think that's, that's a problem. And, you know, myself, what I would promote more of also, or more awareness and consolidation of open spaces, try to improve some of the, some of the quality of life issues that people move to Rio Rancho for, outdoor spaces, you know, trying, you know, it's, it's great, most people don't know, in District 6, District 6 has one of the largest bank swallow colonies in the state. People don't even know that. It's, it's off of Saratoga, actually, towards Iris. And so things like that, people enjoy being able to see coyotes running around, most people, some people don't, you know, but we have raptors, we have quail running around, we see it all, you know, and, and to me, that's one of the things that I want to maintain and enhance, are those opportunities. Also to incorporate that into like outdoor classroom opportunities. I was big on, into that when I was with the Corps, when I would be able to create habitat for mitigation, well, like, like the Rust Medical Center. I was the permitting entity, I was the permitting manager for the Corps on that. And what I did is, you know, we, we were losing habitat due to that development, and I said, well, why don't we work with SCAFKA, the local flood control authority, and set aside existing habitat in perpetuity as a conservation easement? So we did. That's the Black Arroyo Wildlife Park is, is, the genesis was that. So really, I'd like to, those are the things that, when we talk about moving in the right direction, and what we could do better, I think that's something we could focus a little more on like that.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. Is there anything else that you want to touch on that we haven't gotten around to yet?
Well, one thing is, you know, I'm not a politician myself, and, you know, I, I realize that a lot of things are, a lot of, a lot of political issues are tough, tough to discuss, tough to analyze. You know, I just would say that, you know, there's, there's more that we can do in Rio Rancho. There's more outreach we can do, more collaborations we can do. And I think, for me, that was one of the things that allowed me to be successful in the Corps of Engineers. I mean, I'll just, I directed, volunteered out of nowhere to direct a disability program that we had in our district. I thought of ways that we could benefit wounded warriors, students with disabilities, college students with disabilities, and I'd led that program to be nationally recognized and program in the, in the Army across, across the country, number one program in the Army worldwide. So, you know, I just would like to say that, you know, I'm hoping that citizens out there can, can look at it and say, yeah, he's a newcomer, he's new blood, but maybe he might have some good ideas, and, and, you know, I'm hoping that the citizens will just get out and vote. For me, for the existing, for the other people, just get out and vote.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much for your time and for coming in and discussing the issues, and appreciate hearing from you.
Gosh, thanks. It's painless.
All right. Well, thank you so much. And just, you know, like you said, make sure, get out, vote March 5, or even before with the early voting, so.
February 17th is the official early voting, well, March, or actually, February 6th was at the Senior Center, but 17th is across the city.
All right. Thank you so much, everybody, and have a good day.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Eddie Pauls Grove. I'm running for District 6 Counselor. I'm hoping to, to appeal to the citizens out there to get a vote in, whether it's for me or for someone else, but I just want folks to know that my goal, running for the council seat, is to reach out to the public, make sure that they know who I am, and I know who they are. Let folks know that I'll, I'll respond in a timely fashion, I'll make site visits, see the sites, kick the dirt, and we'll try to make a positive message, make 2024 a really positive year for Rio Rancho. Thank you.
Rio Rancho Municipal Elections are slated for 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, March 5, at a variety of locations in Rio Rancho. Residents can vote at any polling location, no matter their address. Voting centers will be at Broadmoor Senior Center Clerk's Annex, Plaza at Unser Marketplace, Loma, Colorado Library, Rio Rancho MVD on Sabana Grande Avenue, The Hub at Enchanted Hills, Rio West Business Center, Cabazon Community Center, Rio Rancho Middle School, Cielo Azul Elementary School, Puesta del Sol Elementary School, Lincoln Middle School, and Colinas del Norte Elementary School. Early voting kicks off February 6 at Broadmoor Senior Center Clerk's Annex, with hours of 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, through March 2. Saturday voting kicks off February 17 with hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Additional locations will open for early voting February 17, at Plaza at Unser Marketplace, Loma, Colorado Library, Rio Rancho MVD. at Plaza at Unser Marketplace, Loma, Colorado Library, Rio Rancho MVD on Sabana Grande Avenue, The Hub at Enchanted Hills, and Rio West Business Center. Absentee voting begins February 6. Voters may cast an absentee ballot by submitting an application to the city clerk's office no later than February 20. Ballots must be returned to the city clerk's office no later than 7:00 PM on Election Day, March 5.